Please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mormon. Mrs. Kryling.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Dr. Elliott.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Marcusson.
Here. My president's report is very short. Happy summer. Schools over, graduation was beautiful. Mike screwed up on the weather, but the indoor ceremony was fantastic, I thought. So, great job by everybody on pulling that together. So, I will defer to Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mr. Marcusson, and I will defer to Dr. Holland to begin the superintendent's report.
So, I'll start by piggybacking that comment. I would like to, again, congratulate all of our graduates of the class of 2016. And I also want to extend a huge thank you to all of our staff who worked around the clock to ensure that our indoor graduation was a positive experience for everyone in attendance. Although having graduation inside was not the preference of any of us, we tried to make the best of the situation. And we really appreciate, or have appreciated, all of the kind sentiments about graduation and also everyone understanding the change that we made. So, thank you. Summer school's underway at the high school, and it's currently under the leadership of Jim Sullivan and Laura Clegg this year. So, we have two administrators working on summer school. Summer construction is also underway. It's all cornered off, and things are going pretty well. We have a walkthrough tomorrow to look at everything that's taking place with our construction. Our summer entrance, just as a reminder, is the door leading into the commons. So, if you come into the school, that's where you need to enter. In terms of our school day, we are wrapping up. We've had some final communication regarding our master schedule and finalizing student schedules this week. Next week, we are finalizing the information that will be sent out to families regarding the schedules and, as well as information to support everyone in understanding our new school day in relation to the courses that students selected. So, we have some meetings set up to finalize all of that. So, there will be some more information to come. Also, in terms of our new school day, part of the reason why we are wrapping up part of the master schedule is because, as with any district, you have students that move in, parents decide that they want to send their students to the school, and we're working on their schedules as well, as well as changes in some of the accommodations that our students receive. And some of those meetings do not occur until the summertime. And so, we're finalizing everything right now. We've been pretty successful in retrieving our Chromebooks. That's just a part of our work to ensure that the district's investment is well taken care of. And the Chromebooks come back, and we update them, we make sure they're clean, refurbished, ready to go, to deploy when school starts. We still have a few out, and so, communication has been sent to parents, but we're still collecting Chromebooks if you have one at home. In terms of professional development in relation to our school day, as well as other parts of our strategic plan for the district, we have extensive, an extensive amount of professional development scheduled for this summer, this month, as well as in July. A key area of focus for our faculty with the changes to our new school day was really considering changes in instruction and teaching in a block, or a hybrid model. And so, we have professional development scheduled called Teaching in Extended Instructional Periods. That's offered twice this summer, as well as twice during the, or as well as during the school year. We have, we've adopted a new evaluation model, as outlined in our strategic plan as well. We have professional development being offered this summer for that, two opportunities for faculty, as well as professional development scheduled during the school year. We also have professional development around our student growth model, which is a part of our, the work of our pair and joint committee, as outlined in our strategic plan. We have PD being offered this summer, as well as during the school year. And I'm mentioning that because we want to give people an opportunity to jump in without the worries of teaching their classes and everything else. But we also want to make sure that professional development is implemented and ongoing during the school year. Some of us need multiple times to engage and learn the same thing before we really understand it. Some of us could use some coaching around it, and some of us will be fine after attending one time. And so, we've embedded it throughout the summer, as well as during the school year. We're also excited about a professional development that's planned for our leadership team, as well as some of our aspiring teacher leaders. It's titled Analyzing Teaching for Student Results, and this is a course taught by Research for Better Teaching, who's nationally known for some of their professional development. It really pushes us to take a deep dive into evaluations, something that hasn't necessarily been done by the leadership team before. And it forces us to look at our, it challenges our lens in the classroom in terms of what we're looking at when we go and visit teachers' classrooms, whether our lens is aligned with making sure that there's improvements in achievement for our students, basically answering the question, how do we know our students are learning? We're very grateful for our partnership with the foundation, who has approved the grant to fund this professional development for our leadership team. And as they outlined, this is the first time that they've ever been able to support PD for our leadership. And so, we're really excited about reporting back around what we learned and also the improvements in our practice as well. So, thank you to the foundation. Last thing I'll mention is, in terms of the expansion of our resource centers, we're really excited about the changes that our new school day schedule has allowed for us to engage in. And one of them is really taking a deep dive in our resource centers and making sure that they're staffed, bless you, before school, during school, and after school. Before and after school, opportunities creates an opportunity for us to partner with community members and current college students around supporting our students. And so, there's been a lot of information sent out about this, as well as information on our website. So, if anyone is interested, has a background, maybe you're a retired teacher, maybe you're a college student looking for additional practicum hours, or a community member with a degree or background in an area, and you're interested in partnering with us to support the needs of our students in our resource centers before or after school, please go to our website, and there's a lot more information, and we'll definitely be in touch with you. Of course, there's background checks and all of our safety parameters that you would be required to go through, as well as an interview and an opportunity to see the space and all those things. But we are looking at this as a great opportunity to work with us and to meet our kids. They're wonderful. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holland.
Shayla, how much of that professional development is required versus optional? Because especially on how to teach in a block schedule, the new evaluation process?
Well, the summer is voluntary and actually, all of it is, but the way it's set up is for the summer. Because we're offering this in the summer and during the school year, teachers can get CPDUs, which are credits towards lane changes for it. It's all optional. We're offering it. We'll have a rotation that won't be optional during our institute days. And we'll also have it embedded in our collaboration time for teachers to continue to engage in it. And so, there's, I believe, in the importance of offering PD in a variety of different ways, because some people will need it, and some people are very familiar with some parts of this. And so, it's also important for us to communicate the same message, which is why the key areas for the district will be a part of the institute day schedule that everyone participates in.
Was it coincidence that you were looking at me when you were talking about Chromebooks that hadn't been turned in? Or did you actually know that my kid was one of the ones?
I had no idea.
Okay.
You were smiling.
All right. Thank you, all the board members, for being present at graduation. I think you, one of the, it's one of the best days, if not the best day of the year. It's certainly our best meeting of the year, without any question. And I'd like to thank Doctors Holland and Maher, and our deans of students, and Carol White, and Brad Ballenick, Scott Craniac, and Ricky Miles, and Tom Rowe, and a whole team of folks working with and around them for really concerted effort in making commencement run so seamlessly. We had to, we, the royal we, had to order many, many thousands of additional chairs. The competition gym had to be set up for overflow seating. The video had to function over there. And one of the things I learned in the process of this is that video travels at one speed, and audio travels at a different speed. And so, you have to actually sync those two up, so that parents are seeing and hearing the right words at the right time. And essentially, a full duplicate setup had to be ready to go in the field house in the event of rain. And oh, did it ever rain. For the first time in an unknown number of years, that's one of the things that's been interesting. And, oh, in 15 years, this hasn't happened. In 11 years, this hasn't happened. Depending on who you ask, how many years it had been, 25 years, it was all over the place. At any rate, graduation was rained out, is actually drowned out with torrential rains during the ceremony, during which our families and our students and our staff were high and dry, enjoying what turned out to be a very, very nice ceremony indoors. So, we certainly made lemonade with a whole lot of lemons and some really satisfying moments, not the least of which was the opportunity for Mrs. Kryling to give her daughter her diploma and get a big hug onstage. Those are always the moments that bring tears to everybody's eyes, and is overall a great day despite it. And the sun came out afterwards, so we couldn't have managed that much better. So, with that, concluding superintendent's report. Thank you.
Did not get the money shot, Diana. That was not the money shot.
It's okay. John saved you. John had a whole row for me.
You got the money shot.
Somebody had to watch over you. I couldn't let you go down in flames.
Yeah, it was positioning. I was in the wrong spot. John was in a better spot.
It's the highlight of my job on the Board of Ed, was giving out the diplomas.
I bet. It is. It is pretty cool. So, now's the time for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay. Reports. We have a LFHS Foundation Year-End Report from Liz Brandell.
Okay. Hello. I think most of you know me. I'm Liz Brandell, the Chair of the High School Foundation. I've been the Chair the past two years, and I actually will be next year as well. And I'm joined here with Jeff Volker, who's our Vice Chair of Development, and he will also be the Vice Chair next year as well. We just wanted to kind of give you an update on what happens. A lot happens in the springtime for the foundation, so we thought we'd just give you that update. Our goal, and when Jeff was here in November, he actually gave you kind of, our goal was 170,000 to raise as funds to support grants and other operations. And we're thrilled to say that we actually exceeded that goal by 10%. And it came from really all areas. It was the donations from family, friends, and foundations, really, as the parents and the community. Our luncheon this year, we went to a fully online auction, not just the silent auction as well. And so, our auction results were higher, which was terrific. Sponsorships for our luncheon and for Pitch Night. Actually, the luncheon, I think, was a little less than the year before, and Pitch Night came in higher. So, that was the second year of that event, and more recognition and more interest from the business community, which is terrific. Really kind of independent from the financial total being higher is we are thrilled with the family participation rate. This is probably, do you think it's 10% higher than last year, at least 10% higher? And we think, while we'd love to get to 35%, to be at 34, I think, and we talk, we think a big part of that is InfoSnap. So, you know, donation per family is probably down a little. That's okay. Having more people involved, we think is terrific. The, as I mentioned, the online registration, that was a boon for us, and we're looking forward to another year of that. The spring luncheon, also, it was a terrific year for that luncheon as far as results, and we think the minor adjustment we made was really beneficial. The Maker Space, which was our largest grant last year, opened, fully opened, I think, in February. It was a partial in January. And we really look forward to seeing the impact that has throughout the curriculum this school year, when it's in effect for the whole year. Also, the business incubator class and Pitch Night, we had two teams funded. Just to remind those of you, the foundation pledges $10,000 to go towards that. And BMO Private Bank actually underwrites the majority of that through a donation to the foundation, which is terrific. And this year, two teams were funded at $20,000 apiece, so that means we had outside community members stepping in with $30,000 of investment. Those teams right now are in the middle of due diligence. That's what I'll be doing tomorrow night with the investors and one of the teams as they work forward this summer to get their LLCs formed and everything ready. As they, that's kind of their summer school, is getting planned as they start to launch things. And the business incubator continues to expand. We started two years ago with 44 kids. Next year, I think we're over 80. We have four sections. Dr. Holland will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have four sections next year of the first-year course, and then a full section of the second-year course, which will be for the funded teams. So, we're really, while we're really excited, that also presents some challenges for us as we work through the community. But it's a partnership, you know, with the administration that we all kind of work to support each other. And then, we, in the spring, award our grants. So, we awarded over $147,000 of grants. The two largest grants are 21st Century Learning Spaces, one for social studies and one for world language. I think it takes, actually, two rooms that were probably a little underutilized within each of those departments. I know for world language, they're going to have movable partition walls that are whiteboards that they can break with small groups and conjugate verbs and things on whiteboards that move. And in the, for social studies, I believe they expect to use it a lot with the interdisciplinary course and have furniture that moves, once again, into small groups and different types of learning styles. And so, it just is continuing through the different departments, where it started with the business department and in many ways with the Maker Space, coming in of, using a different type of space. We had four professional development grants. One, Dr. Holland talked about. We have another to the world language department for, they're going to a seminar. We're underwriting the registration cost also for supporting the executive function learning initiative. And then, for social studies, once again, we've done this for many years, was for the Newberry Consortium, that we underwrite that course. For wellness, it's the polar heart monitors. This supports, I think we have to do increased reporting to the state of Illinois. And so, there are straps, and these are the monitors that go into that. With the one-to-one learning and all the Chromebooks, some of the grants came in that we found that we needed additional support, as people use additional tools. And so, we have WeVideo, which we were using, I believe, a, I don't want to say a sample, but a test sample of WeVideo throughout the school, and it didn't have enough horsepower. So, we have funding, actually getting our own license for that. And then, the English and library also asked for video and audio recording kits that help the kids use their Chromebooks and do more presentations, and the sound picks up better. We continue, of course, to fund the incubator, both the MVP awards, which happened in February, and then the Pitch Night awards. SAT is helping as we move, as we transition within the state from ACT to SAT. iPad catalog stations are helping us actually comply with ADA guidelines, but it's for the libraries, putting the card catalogs in, onto the iPads. And one will be at a level that helps us with compliance for ADA. The English classroom surround sound is for the film classes, and it outfits a classroom. So, when, for the classes that are studying film, that it gives them better sound where they can hear the nuances. And that, the LFH newspaper magazine is a partnership with the boosters, and this is actually the journalism classes with Mr. Scott. He has a vision that he's starting next year of redoing how they, how we prepare our newspaper and magazine and how we distribute it. And it's one where the boosters, as you know, they have done a lot of the journalism with the sports reporting. So, they came in as we, to partner, as we gave some of the funding needed to launch that. And one of the favorite for everyone, although it's not a big grant, is the sidewalk signs. So, no longer will they blow away, be held together with bungee cords. We all pooled together, and I think there are seven new sidewalk signs coming. And then, we always enjoy having grants that are generated by students. You know, it just, we'd like them to think about their environment and have some of their ideas. So, this year, we were really thrilled to have two that we were able to fund. One was in the fall. It was the RMA lighting software, which allows them to program all the lights within the RMA for a performance. And that, we, we're partnership, I think, with Applause and Pals on that. And then, the second is a prairie garden, which came from a student of Mary Beth Neuwars'. And that actually has already been planted. It was planted before school ended. And so, when you drive around on the south side, take the road around campus on the south side, you will see that they removed a lot of the grass, and they did a huge planting. And so, this will allow the environmental classes to not have to go to Elway to study some of the ecosystem and the prairie. And so, that just helped there. And our goals, so looking ahead to our goals for next year, we'd like to hit 35% on the family participation. Our raising of revenues, we're upping that to 180,000 as we move forward. And we'd like to continue to build on Foundation Month in November, and we will think of different ways to highlight the foundation within the community during that month, and along with continuing to expand community participation. And this is key, not only for recognition and fundraising for us, but also, obviously, the business incubator and all aspects of that. And we'll open for any questions.
I have a question, Liz. How did the first business incubator-winning team, how did they do in this year, and what are they doing as they head off to college?
They, that's a great question. And let me say that, start by saying, the business incubator is, while we teach the students that it's an iterative process, and you learn and you make changes, that's what the incubator is for all of us running it. They had a huge learning lesson that it takes longer to accomplish things than what they thought. And they would be the first to admit that they were a little over-optimistic and probably a little naive of when someone tells you something will be done in eight weeks, it may be 16 when you hire services. And I think at times, they thought it was because they were teenagers, and we assured them it wasn't. That was real life. So, they are working with some students to, and I think it's with the school, that they will, they're students that were in the incubator class this past year as juniors that were not on a team that was funded. And so, they are going to continue, and it's High School Hired is the team, they are going to continue in the class the second year, running High School Hired. And so, it is something, as their investor, once again, we're testing it to see how it goes. But we have all learned, especially the students, because of that, those three students, two are on the east coast, one's on the west coast. So, not even similar states or anything. But they are, they do want to keep it going. So, we're, the school was working with us, and so, I think we've come up with something that we can test and see how it goes. But it is, I think, this year, for the investors, as they went in, and the two teams that were funded, there was more of an eye of, they, that year goes really fast, and then they all go away. So, what is an idea that can launch quicker from an investor's side?
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Liz or Jeff?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to congratulate you for a good fundraising year, as well as handing out as many of the grants as you did. It was funny. Last week, I was on a retreat with the middle school students, as well as high school students. And one of the subjects one night was, what are some of the things you're most proud of? What are you most excited about? And one of the high school students was in the business incubator-winning team, and she was so excited and so thrilled. So, having heard her tell all the middle school students, who are either at Deer Path or at Lake Bluff, how great it was, you're going to have a lot more attendance coming in on that. So, good job there, and that was nice to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, there's a million things that make Lake Forest and Lake Bluff great. And I mean, one of the things is the community support that we get directly from a foundation that helps the school do a lot of the things that they wouldn't normally be able to do. And I think that is one of the things that makes our community and our school so great. So, thank you both for everything you do.
And thank you all for your support. I know people support in many different ways, but it's been great. And just keep pitching us to the community, as a way to help us. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Okay. Are there any committee reports this month? Have any committees met since last month? No, Education Committee, Finance and Ops?
We did not meet, excuse me. But just a couple quick comments. Number one, the school construction project is underway, so please make note of the new entrance. I think Mike already highlighted that, or Shayla highlighted at the beginning, but, so there's new entrance into the school. Progressing nicely. So, you know, like anything else in business, you don't want any surprises, good or bad. And so, this fits that, you know, that mold for sure. We finished our fiscal year budget, or we're in the process of wrapping it down, winding it down, I should say. And we've done substantially better than we had anticipated. You all may remember that we had some deficit spending, about $986,000 is what we approved last year. That's essentially wiped out, and we have, you know, we're in the black in a good way. So, those numbers aren't totally finalized yet, but that's a tremendous work effort of the whole team. And so, the first thing you're going to ask is, well, what's with the big swing, right? So, there's lots of things. We've been very conservative on the amount of money we receive from the state for a lot of obvious reasons. We did get most of that funding, if not all of it, which we did not count on, has come through, so that's helped us significantly. And then, the other thing that's important to note, which is a big differential, is special education. So, special education, depending on the number of students that enter the district, that can fluctuate, oftentimes as many as seven figures. So, we've been monitoring that and measuring that the best that we can, but it is one of those surprise factors. We think it's a good factor, because it allows us to help those kids that now become part of our high school community in a first-class way. But it's one of those things that we also don't really understand from time to time. So, you're going to hear me make comments in subsequent meetings, you know, depending on the ebbs and flows of people moving in and out of the community of what that looks like. And so, that's one of those, that's one of those buckets that we want to make sure we properly fund and monitor. And then, our next finance meeting is July 7th at 7:30 a.m. Welcome to the public. So, anybody that would like to join us, you're certainly welcome. And that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Mormon, is there an NSSCD liaison report?
No, it's a quiet month, but I do have another report of the Education Committee. Do you have a report?
No, we have not met.
Okay. I would like to report on.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, anyway, two weekends ago, Mr. Simic, myself, Suzanne Sands, District 67 Board Member, and Ann Sorensen from the Finance Committee, we all went to Washington, D.C. for three days to support the National School Board Association lobbying effort. I found it to be really an incredible three days. You know, I wasn't overly looking forward to it, and I was pleasantly surprised by it. The biggest things were, first, we were educated on ESA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, which, if people aren't familiar with that, that's what replaced the No Child Left Behind Act. And they found a lot of problems with No Child Left Behind, so this tried to take care of a lot of those shortcomings. So, basically, we were briefed on those for two days. And then, on the third day, we all went up to, you know, before Congress, we got to meet with our congressional staffs, with Congressman Dold's office, Senator Kirk's office, Mr. Durbin, and there was one other. Who else did we meet with?
Tammy Duckworth's office, and I've got a list of them here as well. Keep going. I'll fill that in. Keep going, I'll fill, I'll fill that in.
The interesting thing that I found was, with the ESA, a big portion of this devolves leadership away from really a national board of education back to, you know, the local community, which is the best place to spend money. Another thing that I found interesting was I really didn't understand, you know, idea funding, how, how it works, and the difference between authorization and appropriation. For those that don't understand this, actually, when Congress authorizes spending, they don't necessarily give you the money for it. So in the case of idea funding, which is special ed funding, it's authorized for 40% and that's 40% of the average spending per child, you know, across the nation. However, they only actually fund it to about 16% right now. And for districts like ours, we're, it makes a huge impact. Mike ran the numbers on it and it's about 19 million over the last nine years that we didn't receive, that we were authorized to receive. And in a district like ours, it makes a bigger difference because that money came from the community, went to Washington and never came back. You know, this ended up in funding something else or a higher priority. So, you know, the, the big push, and we, our congressional delegations have all promised that while we won't get right 40%, that over maybe the next 10 years, we'll get, at least get closer to it. There was also a big push to align career readiness and that's where the business incubator comes in. It's aligning basically career track and getting students more involved with the business world, teaching in a way that students are prepared, not just for college, but possibly for, you know, a, you know, working career. And all in all, three days we spent there, I thought was quite informative. It was, it was nice to hear from, Illinois has one of the strongest delegations and we were the only delegation that voted 100%. And that's our senators and congressional delegations that voted 100% in support of the school initiatives and the education initiatives. That's all I have. It was a, it was a great weekend.
I'll add on a couple of things. I'd first like to say what a great job Mr. Mormon did, along with Mrs. Sands and Mrs. Sorensen. But, because Ted is here, really impressed with his willingness to listen and his ability to ask very good questions and speak at appropriate times and, and forcefully in congressional offices, in which we were in many. We were in Senator Durbin's office, Congressman Holtgren, Congressman Dold, Senator Kirk, Congressman Kelly, Congressman Kinzinger, and Congressman, Congresswoman Duckworth's office. Not all at the same time. Illinois delegation divided among those, those various offices. But it's really a great learning opportunity. Some of the sessions, I'd really like to see our continued participation because it is a bit of a drink by fire hose on the federal impact of, of federal funding on local, local schools. That's really very evident in the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, which brought in the, ushered in the Measure and Punish, which is what No Child Left Behind was all about. Grades three through 12, annual testing, once in 11th grade. And there's a very strong movement away from the over-testing of students. And also devolution, as Mr. Mormon mentioned, of centralized power in Washington to more authority at the state level for states to sort things out and also at the local level, local school board level. So the National School Board Organization is the loudest voice in those conversations as an advocate for public schools and public schooling and a very loud voice on many of the provisions of ESSA. On the funding, as Mr. Mormon mentioned, the number of dollars just last year that Washington mandated and did not pay for, to put a picture, give you a picture of what that looks like, that is annually 27 teachers in our high school. That's the difference. So that one-year difference is 27 staff members. And you take that over nine years and it's $19 million. And Lake Forest is very unusual in that we have, all of these dollars are generated, virtually all these dollars are generated locally and they are not reimbursed, which is a real significant impact. Some of the, some of the seminars that were there, very interesting, the social media elections. They brought in some experts to talk about how social media is impacting local school board elections. New federalism in education was what is happening with this devolution to the, to the states, what, what the trends are there. An informative session on career and technical education, the reauthorization of that. One of the keynote speakers is Dr. Larry Sabato, who has accurately prognosticated 98% of local, state and national elections in the last several elections. We also had the current Secretary of Education, Dr. John King, and the former Secretary of Education Lamar Alexander come and speak. Both very, very different, both very passionate about, about their respective roles. Then obviously, a number of meetings with, on Capitol Hill that we had in preparation for that. One of the very important things that could potentially be an issue for us, that several of us attended, were the session on school choice. Now, school choice sounds like a great thing to many people, but what you see is how districts like ours are really most negatively impacted by many of the proposals talking about school choice. So many things that are really worthwhile on a, on a, on a national scale. Also, the great opportunity to sit and have a chance to talk to people from different boards from around the country, the various issues that different states are experiencing. And you start to see what a different world other people are living in relative to, to our, our life and our respective bubbles here. So it's really a terrific conference. I hope that we continue to participate. I really appreciate Mr. Mormon's willingness to go and spend three days in some real heat and a lot of movement in different parts of the Capitol and the Capitol City. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Ted.
Okay, we're, we're moving on to our action items. We're going to do things a little different. On each of the action items, I'm going to call for a motion, ask for a second, and then ask for some discussion before we take a vote. So no need to discuss before. We'll discuss in between the second and the vote. Okay, guys? Got it? Cool. All right. So first action item relates to staff compensation. May I have a motion to approve the 2016, 2017 staff compensation?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the 2016, 2017 staff compensation.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We've had a lot of discussion on this. You should know, as a community, for all those watching at home, the board has spent a lot of time with Mr. Simic, with Jen, amongst ourselves, one-on-one, talking about this issue. And we're, we're going to do a deeper dive into admin and support services salaries in the coming year. Task our joint compensation committee, 67 and 115 Compensation Committee, to help us with metrics and also talk to our ISPE contacts about a more effective process, communication and review process between the board and the admin. So any other discussion from our distinguished board?
I think it's just worth noting that we are coming in with a net decrease this year, mostly due to some retirements, but, you know, it's good for the district.
Dr. Elliott points out, our net decrease in support and admin services salaries is going down 0.7% from the prior year. And then I would just add, one of the challenges that we've had is benchmarks, right? Who do we identify? Which high schools? What roles are the same? Where are they uniquely different? And that's where it's so difficult to try to capture that. The, the one good thing is we've been very consistent, right? And so prior boards have established what they think the appropriate benchmarks are. The superintendent and his team have done a great job sticking to that on all, a whole host of levels, not just salary increases, but when we look at positions, whether we add positions or whether we eliminate positions, depending on the need, you know, we're, we're pretty consistent with what that looks like. Going forward, we think that that should be a little broader for a whole host of reasons I won't bore you with. But that's one of the things that, that Reese had highlighted at the top of, of this issue that we're going to get to the bottom of. So stay tuned.
Thank you. So may I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next item is the approval, we have to approve the prior year school calendar. So this is not a typo. The 2015-2016 final school calendar. May I have a motion to approve the 2015-2016 final school calendar?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the 2015-2016 final school calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
Want to go back into the Wayback Machine or change any days off?
Yes, can my daughter become a kindergartner again?
We all wish that. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the 2017-2018 school calendar. I forgot to say this, but we're, we're going to be welcoming the class of 2020. Dave, your kids are going to be in the class of 2020. Makes me feel very old. We know their prom theme already, though. I could see clearly, yeah. 2020. You've been working on that.
They've been working on that, yeah.
I've never heard that.
No. So may I have a motion to approve the 2017-2018 school calendar?
I move that Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the 2017-2018 school calendar as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Couple of comments on this. There are a couple of dates worth noting here. March 5th will be a day of non-attendance. That is frequently referred to by our parents as Easter Monday. This is one of the days that for families traveling is, we hear this from our religious leaders in the community, that is a strong preference for them to be able to have families travel on that day. So that is a day of non-attendance unless we have a snow day. It's designated in the calendar as a makeup day as necessary. And that's to prevent us from pushing into another week at the end of the calendar. And April 2nd likewise will be a non-attendance day. And this is another date that is designated as a snow, as a snow day makeup day. So this is, I'd like to thank our colleagues in Lake Bluff. They have led the way in District 65 on designating a couple of days. It's worked well for families and also for the schools to have those days designated ahead of time so families can potentially prepare for that. I also like to thank Dr. Holland for her work on the 17-18 calendar. I thought the, the public meetings were very thoughtfully conducted and a very prudent decision made because of the complexity of the issues around changing the calendar. To study that in the coming year and make a determination for whether or not there'll be a change in the recommendation years going forward relative to exams, exam schedules and, and other aspects of that school calendar that we've heard so much about over the years. So a thoughtful discussion and also a thoughtful decision on that.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract, who is a consultant at the high school. May I have a motion to approve the Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Throw out a couple of changes that I'm recommending after a conversation with Mrs. Davis on this. One of, one of the things that is greater specificity in 1.2 in the contract is that there's a specificity of not less than a number of hours, just to be clear about how many, at least how many hours Mrs. O'Hara would be working. Also on the termination, suggested change, I discussed these with Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. Davis separately, a change of a convenience termination, so without cause, on 60 days notice, a written that's clarified within there. And also adding 5.2 in the general provisions, a confidentiality, even though it's, it's very obvious that this is an expectation that we have, just to make that plain in, in the agreement. So that states that Mrs. O'Hara will protect the confidentiality of the school district students and comply with applicable laws and district policies. That's obviously something that she does anyway, but to make that plain. Thank you.
Can apply to the as, as adjusted, as recommended?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody understood those changes pretty well? Any discussion on this?
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. I will not be voting in favor of this. I did not vote in favor of it last year. I had some reservations two years ago. I've had numerous conversations with the superintendent. We're going to agree to disagree philosophically. My belief three years ago, as it is today, that with the proper planning and, and leadership, that this work should be transferred to actual staff employees as opposed to an outside contractor. I don't believe that work was done. It certainly wasn't done to my satisfaction. Kathy O'Hara is a fabulous person and has done more for our respective communities than, than I certainly could ever hope to. So this has nothing to do with Kathy as an individual. I think it's, it's, it's more of a leadership issue and managing the appropriate personnel. I think, you know, our days of being able to have the luxury of hiring outside contractors over time, we need, now's the time for us to start to fix some of that. Because down the road, I think it's going to be more problematic, whether it's because we inherit stuff from Springfield or it's, or it's other elements that we're going to have to manage ourselves. So just to speak my piece, I'm not in favor of the contract and will not be voting for, in favor of.
Any other discussion?
I was just going to thank Sally for her insight and tweaking things.
I want to speak to that for a second. So just to sort of provide counterpoint, I'm going to vote for it and I'm going to do that because I'm, I want to be deferential to Dr. Holland's request that we renew. One of the many, many wonderful things that Dr. Holland done, has done, has taken on a number of initiatives this year. And I, I just don't think that addressing the concerns that, that Mr. Powers has raised, which I think are very valid concerns, has been in perhaps the top 10 list of priorities for this year. So I'm going to vote for it because I want to be deferential to Dr. Holland about her needs and her staffing and where this falls in her priorities. The recommendation around for convenience, just to remind the board, means that essentially with 60 days notice, we can walk away. So I, I think it, it provides a sort of a bridging opportunity if it gives Dr. Holland flexibility and it gives us more flexibility as well.
John and I agree on this. I'll probably vote, no, not probably, I will be voting in favor of this in support of Dr. Holland. We've had a lot of discussion about this in the last couple of months. Kathy is a fabulous individual, a hard worker. We're not disputing her skills and abilities and what she's providing to the district.
We're not disputing her skills and abilities and what she's providing to the district. I think this gets caught up more in process, and I think what we realize is Dr. Holland had a million other things on her agenda and didn't get around to figuring out a way to redistribute these responsibilities to others. I'm sorry, I didn't mean get around, I didn't mean get around, don't, don't, don't.
I was just going to say, that's actually not necessarily the case. There is a plan to, for someone to take over this work for the following year, and so it has been a priority, which is why this is laid out explaining what she does, and there's already been internal communication regarding who will take over this. I think me stepping into this position versus what's happened in the past seems to be more of the concern that I understand. Just wanted to clarify that, because there is a plan in place as the memo outlines.
Really poor choice of words. So, again, what she does is important. With the craziness in Springfield, with the likelihood or potential of declining enrollment, we've challenged Mr. Simic and the administration to really look hard at non-instructional expenses, support services, admin services, and look for new and different ways and better ways to be more efficient everywhere, at the school, at the west campus, building and grounds everywhere. So, we've looked hard at this, so.
So, I just wanted to add that I, I will be voting in favor of this. I think Kathy O'Hara has incredible connections in our community that allow our students to get involved. Her work touches an enormous number of students, and when we thought about how much time that would take for teachers out of the classroom to replicate the work that she's done, it was obvious to me that she's actually quite a bargain. And also when you think of the amount we spend on, for example, athletic trainers and a lot of things that aren't directly instructional time, even though they are part of the regular budget, I think this is, this is really a good value.
And for the sake of clarity, Dr. Holland beat me to the punch on this, I want to make clear that I've been a very strong supporter of Mrs. O'Hara the last several years since I got here, and in large part because I see on an ongoing basis the value that she adds to individual students and also groups of students. But my charge to Dr. Holland when she arrived was to take a lay of the land and make an assessment of what, what programs or individuals were necessary in order to move forward and exercise her judgment on, on those things. And this is a person that she agrees in this, in this case with, with my assessment that it's a great deal of value here. I know there's been, as Mr. Powers has pointed out, some consternation about that. That should not reside on Dr. Holland's plate, but rather on mine if there is any consternation.
Just real quick, one quick, my issue is not a value, okay? So I want to be really clear. I think Kathy is a tremendous value at the, the value or the cost of her contract. My issue is, I don't know that we need an outside consultant to do this work, and based upon the size of our staff, which I think many of us would agree is substantial relative to other districts our size, that with the proper notice and with the proper focus, that these tasks should or could have been shifted. This is not a Dr. Holland issue. Dr. Holland has stepped in and done a marvelous job. My only employee, as we all know, is the superintendent, and the superintendent and I have talked about this. In my opinion, the, the work wasn't done as early as it should have been, and here we are. So I didn't vote for it last time. Nothing's changed, so I'm not voting for it again. But I do not want anybody to confuse the fact that this is a money issue or a value issue related to what Kathy O'Hara can deliver on behalf of the district.
On the board? No?
I guess I'll just add, along with Mr. Powers, I'll be voting no, and a lot of that goes to, a year ago when I voted no then also, but we did discuss, and was discussed at that time, that last year would be the final year of her contract, and that we would move forward and get other people trained up to do that. And again, having outside contractors or independent contractors doing what should be inside or in-house work, I just have an issue with.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
No.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Nay.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Is the approval of an east campus roofing bid in the amount of $155,001.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the east campus roofing bid in the amount of $155,100.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, we got a second? All right, cool.
I just highlight very quickly, this is part of our five-year capital plan. It's been, it's been thoughtfully and skillfully on the dockets for quite some time. What we've traditionally done, instead of waiting until we needed a complete roof repair, is the team takes a look at it in sections and determines which ones are in, in greater need than others. That's exactly what's occurred here, and this has been in the budget. We've, we've been contemplating this expense, and we believe now is the time to do it in order to kind of proactively manage some of these repairs on an ongoing basis.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next up is the approval of our Miller Cooper three-year audit contract. May I have a motion to approve the auditor three-year contract?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the auditor three-year contract.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I want to thank Jen and Brittany and everybody for, I mean, we have very reasonable audit fees. I think we actually have a decline in the first, first of the three-year contract and then a slight uptick in years two and three, so thank you. I know that's due to all the hard work that you and your team do to keep audit fees down. So, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Seems like every year we have to approve the copier lease, or at least there's one copier lease, so this is...
That's it. I'm not approving the copier lease, just for the record.
So, not sure, it must be over $25,000, right? No one's looking at me. May I have a motion to approve the copier lease?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the copier lease.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll kill you. No, okay. No discussion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye. Thank you. Next item is the approval of a bleacher purchase in the amount of $37,499. Is this on the east or, is this the east or west campus? Movable?
Wow, on a flatbed.
This is not the time for discussion.
Oh, sorry. Straight up broke my own rule.
You could please get a...
Oh, may I have a motion to approve the bleacher purchase in the amount of $37,499?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the bleacher purchase in the amount of $37,499.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, sorry, that was just a memory lapse. I know it was explained in the board packet, I just don't remember. So where, can you explain what the, where the bleachers are and how they're going to be used?
I'll actually even hit the mic. Yes, these are going to be housed mainly at east campus, but they are portable to west on those high event type of affairs that we will host. We will move them to west.
Just a little other color commentary. This is what Alan Albus said when we began the track project, that we wanted to live in the space a little bit before we made this investment. We've, we've done it now for two seasons and realized that we need a place for spectators to sit. It's also already paid for, by the way. It was part of the original 2013 bond offering. So, again, another planned capital expense that we really delayed from the original, from the original purchase point. Correct, correct. Yeah, it's budgeted already.
Right.
It will be paid for once we approve it, if we're so fortunate to.
Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the first reading of the private tutoring policy. This was an item that we deferred based on some feedback we received from the staff. So may I have a motion to approve the first reading of the private tutoring policy?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve first reading of the private tutoring policy.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? What was the change? Mr. Simic, Dr. Holland, could you remind us what the change was?
Yes, there's a question that arose around, there's one line in the original draft that had to do with whether or not an employee could tutor the sibling of, of another student and what was pointed out, and I think validly so, is there a great many students that are siblings that don't happen to share the same last name? And so we didn't want to have a staff member caught in a, in an awkward position of violating a, a policy without being aware that, that they were.
Any other discussion, folks? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is the second reading of, the approval of the second reading for policy 2:150. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 2:150 on committees?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of policy 2:150 committees.
Second?
I would just like to say, it's very fun to watch Mr. Markerson in these meetings having to abide by these rules.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, approval of policy 4:170, safety, the second reading. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 4:170 on safety?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of policy 4:170, safety.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, approval of policy 5:330, education support, personnel, sick days, vacations, holidays, and leaves, second reading. May I have a motion?
I move, Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of policy 5:330, educational support, personnel, sick days, vacations, holidays, and leaves.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
I think just a correction, I believe this is the second reading. I think the motion, did it just say first?
Oh, we did? Okay.
It is definitely the second reading.
Yeah, it's definitely the second.
So I move that the second reading of policy 5:330.
Okay. Did we get a second?
Oh, a second.
Second? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of press, which is an acronym, press issue 91, the second reading. May I have a motion to approve the second reading?
The, the title says first reading and the motion says second. Want to clarify where we are in that.
Okay. It's a second? I remember we went over this last, I believe we went over it last month. Second? Motion to approve the second reading of press issue 91.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of press issue 91.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markerson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is the approval of the Illinois Bone and Joint Institute contract renewal, which is one of the best deals we have. If anyone has ever had athletes or dancers or anybody that's ever had to go to Illinois Bone and Joint, you should really bring them down to the football field and have them be examined.
Is that a leading question? Are you skewing the vote? I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Illinois Bone and Joint contract renewal.
My bias out there. May I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Now we're supposed to discuss it.
Now we're supposed to discuss. They do great work.
The third one, we're going to adjourn.
Impeach me. Please, yeah. Any discussion on this? They do great work for our kids. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is our HR report. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented in your packet?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District one fifteen Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
Second?
Second.
Two seconds, second and a third.
Any discussion?
There was a fair amount of information provided, given that we're getting close to the end of the year. Everybody's cool? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, and I'd like to remind the board, any item can be removed from the consent agenda at your request. So, barring that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for May twenty sixteen, adoption of First Midwest Banking Resolution, the adoption of Northern Trust Banking Resolution, the approval of CLIC workers' comp contract renewal in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars, the approval of the CLIC liability insurance contract renewal in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, the adoption of our prevailing wage resolution, the approval of budget transfers, the adoption of Lake Forest Bank and Trust Banking Resolution, minutes of a regular meeting dated May ninth twenty sixteen, minutes of an executive session dated May ninth twenty sixteen, the disposal of audio recordings from November eleventh twenty fourteen. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District one fifteen Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
I'm just wondering why we have three different bank resolutions.